And then you had houses on every side of you. Yeah. And I thought, hmm. Or is it just trying to try it out and parse it out? It can't be like that. I didn't go real playing. Yeah. Did it? 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 Good evening. We welcome you here to the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We'll begin our meeting as we are required to do because it's an electronic meeting, a statement on our electronic meeting. Pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined that this meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location, given the ongoing novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the press and public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube at To participate in the public comment period or scheduled public hearings, please visit www.wvc-ut.gov-publiccomment or contact the city recorder. Thank you. We have all council members are participating in our meeting tonight. Of course, with that essentially being electronic, we hope that some are listening in on Facebook and other means to participate as well. We note that all council members are in attendance. We need next our, we have our Inside the City video series, these little glimpses of key things in our city to help you know what really is happening since, in truth, many of our residents of our city are not familiar with many of the things that go on in our city. And, but just for me personally, I really enjoy getting this inside glimpse as well.
I am Chief Colleen Jacobs of the West Valley City Police Department. Today is May 15th, 2021, Peace Officer Memorial Day. Peace Officer Memorial Day was authorized by Congress and instituted by President John F. Kennedy in 1962. Since that time, May 15th is a day to recognize and honor the officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice, our brothers and sisters, those who came before us and those whose loss is all too recent and painful while engaged in the selfless service to their communities. In 2020, 362 law enforcement officers lost their lives in the line of duty in the United States. More than half of those deaths were the result of complications associated with the pandemic COVID-19, which has impacted our nation in ways not seen in modern history. While the pandemic has interrupted our traditional remembrances on this day, nothing will ever prevent us from remembering their sacrifice and the resolve we share as we renew our vow to carry on, to keep going, to never waver in our duty to our communities, to our fellow officers, and to our families and loved ones. As we carry on with pride, integrity, and discipline, we honor their memories. Our police officers face unique and complex challenges today as the dangers of the job remain lurking around the corner or on the next call for service. While some communities search for change after finding themselves out of alignment with the law enforcement officers that serve them, change that can sometimes appear to run counter to the strong support we receive from our West Valley City community. May 15th is a day to recognize that those who feel the loss of our fallen brothers and sisters most intensely are their families and friends. For them, the absence of their loved ones is a daily reminder of the sacrifice made for the greater good, the selfless act of a person who truly believed that our society only functions if good people are willing to put their lives on the line. Today is a day to reach out to the families and friends of the fallen to say thank you and remind them that our law enforcement family will always be there for them. Utah is a big state, but our law enforcement family is small. When a law enforcement officer loses their life, it is profoundly felt by those in every department across the state. In 2020, our law enforcement family lost Officer Nathan James Lyde of the Ogden City Police Department. On Thursday, May 28th, 2020, Officer Lyde responded to an emergency call, a woman reporting that a man on scene was threatening to kill her. When Officer Lyde and his partners arrived, the male subject ran inside the house. Fearing for the woman who had made the emergency call, Officer Lyde did not hesitate. He moved toward the house, toward the danger. The man fired shots through the front door, and Officer Lyde was fatally wounded. Officer Lyde had just 15 months on the job and is survived by his wife. The West Valley City Police Department is no stranger to the grief and sorrow that follows the loss of an officer. Today, I recognize, remember, and honor West Valley City Police Department Officer Cody Brotherson. On Sunday, November 6th, 2016, Cody was assisting officers who were pursuing a car that had just been stolen. Near the intersection of 2200 West and 4100 South, Cody threw a spike strip in front of the stolen car as it fled from the officers at a high rate of speed. The stolen car intentionally veered toward Cody, striking him and fatally wounding him. Cody had been a West Valley Police Officer for three years. He was survived by his parents, two brothers, and the love of his life. Cody's sacrifice was a turning point for our police department. Today, we honor Cody by never wavering from our duty as we serve every day and every night to keep the peace, protect those who are in need, and bring justice to those who might prey upon our community. We stand united in our mission, and it's only through the sacrifice of those who have come before us and the bravery of those who stand among us that we can do the job before us. I am honored to stand among you, and I thank you, my fellow police officers, for your service. Always serve with pride while protecting with honor. Take care of each other and stay safe out there.
Thank you. More solemn one this time and certainly deserves of remembering. That's one we need to keep and preserve and share at least annually, so, but preferably more often. With that kind of somber note, we'll move into our regular meeting on anything after that's just less important, but it is important to some people, so we'll address these issues tonight. We begin by, as we need to approve minutes for our meeting from last week, and so we need a motion and second on the minutes.
I move to approve our minutes.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments, then without objection, the minutes will be approved. Hearing no objections, that is unanimous. Next, we have our comment period. Nicole, how many people do we have online today?
Mayor, we just have one person signed up for the general comment period.
All right. And with that then, let's bring them on, Mr. Vesok, and see what he has to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and City Council. Tonight, you're voting on Resolution 2176, to buy a Tesla for the city manager, basically to have a new toy. We are not going to change our fleet to Teslas. Right now, it may be the top technology, but nobody knows what Ford and Chevy are going to put out. Most of our fleet are Ford and Chevy's. Spending $55,000 for basically a toy for the city is not wise. Wait, wait the year till Ford and Chevy put theirs out, and then buy something that we would use in our fleet. Next, in your unfinished business, the senior living. I drove out into this area. The plus for this will be the improvements on the road, sidewalks, lighting through the development agreement. The negative, like I said last week though, is it is the third one being approved. We need to, once again, save these big lots, but I do like the improvement that will be done in this area that is badly needed. So I hope you guys pass it. I know it's going to be close. The fee structure that you guys are going to be voting on, all fees are going up. It's a fact of life. I know that's going to go through. One other thing that happened this weekend was the My Hometown Event, Phase Two for Trailhead Park. Over 100 people, well over 100 people were out there. They did painting of the light poles, the parking lot, the building, and the lanai that was there. Looks great, but the big thing that they did was planted 20 trees. These trees did not cost the city a penny. They were donated by Tree Utah and Ivory Homes, and I think we should recognize and thank them for that. And Nancy Day was out there, and she did do that, but it is a big, big thing. These are big, beautiful trees, and it had to be several hundred dollars apiece, and they were donated to the city by this organization. And Craig Thomas was out there. I'd like to recognize him too with all his hard work, and I even have a picture of him raking. So he doesn't just put events together, give us all the tools to do it, he actually gets out there and gets his hands dirty. That's all I have tonight. Stay safe, stay strong.
And that's everyone for the public comment period, I believe. With that, we go to our Assistant City Manager, who is sitting in for Wayne tonight. Any comments?
No, sir. No comment for me tonight.
City Council members? Hearing none, then we'll go down on the rest of our agenda. We begin with a public hearing, and let's see. It looks like we're going to consider Resolution 21-75 and Ordinance 21-27 on this issue. What this is, is a change to our fee system of impact fees. Impact fees are set by a city based on criteria that are to some degree controlled by the legislature. They require that we analyze them and determine if they fall within certain guidelines. In other words, a city can't charge $100,000 for an impact fee for a new park for one home. You know, there are limits. Now, I use a very outlandish example, but we are required to evaluate these fees on a, these impact fees on a regular basis. Those who have looked through them to see the fees will note that there were some sizable changes based upon actual costs and based upon the guidelines that have been established. And so this will take care of these changes. Some were, you know, eliminated, but most obviously are going up in conjunction with the cost of parks and all the different things that we do in conjunction with roads and fire and police and so forth. That is the introduction. Before I turn, open it up for public comment, any comments from the council? Not hearing any, then our city recorder, are there, is there anyone online to speak to this issue?
No, sir. There is not.
With that then, the public comment portion was open and closed in the same sentence, so to speak. And with that, we will come back to the council for any further discussion or motions.
Move to approve Resolution 21-75.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, then we will go to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Fiki Samanu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northall?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have Ordinance 21-27. This is changing our code regarding the impact fees beyond the resolution, so this will also need to be taken care of with that, council.
I would move for approval of Ordinance 21-27.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Northall?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fiki Samanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 21-76 to approve the purchase of an electric vehicle for $55,000, not to exceed that amount, for a Tesla Model Y compact SUV. This is kind of an interesting departure from our normal purchases. We do have hybrid vehicles, and of course, many regular gasoline-powered vehicles and some diesel, but these are items that the city maintains, and in our discussion of it, though we had a public comment on it, there comes a point where you have to start and find out what is going to be decided with these. And I think it would be a good thing, one of the discussions that we have had is on electronic, excuse me, electric charging stations. And this will be interesting to see how that works and what the market is like for an electric vehicle and what might have to be done there. So, you know, it's, we can decide if we pass this, but it means it's time for us to start evaluating that or not. With that introduction then to the council.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes.
You know, I really am in favor of this, the fact that we will not be using gas. The maintenance will be minimal with no oil changes, the five-year bumper-to-bumper, 10-year warranty on batteries. When you call them with a problem, they actually come to your facility, repair your car, let you know it's fixed. There's so many pluses with this, and I would really, whoever makes the motion or if I make it, like to ask for a yearly report on the savings, and then also discourage having the self-driving package at first. I know it's an additional cost, so I would rather not have that on this test. That's my only concerns. So with that, I'm willing to make the motion to approve Resolution 21-76.
Second.
Properly before us, I think I would mention one other thing I didn't. Apart from the realities of an electric vehicle, et cetera, there is a great deal of symbolism associated with that. If in fact, we want to become more green, there are some steps we need to take. Now, we've taken a lot of steps, but many of them are not very visible. Changing the light fixtures in the ceiling can make a big difference, but no one really notices that. But hopefully, more people will notice an electric vehicle that West Valley is purchasing and driving around the city. Anyway, with that, any comments?
Yes, Mayor, I think that, oh, sorry. I think that the light fixtures in the ceiling do make everything visible, but also, to recap a little bit of our discussion last week, and I raised concerns that why are we purchasing a Tesla when I don't think we're going to purchase a Tesla fleet? This is what's available to us now. We're also looking at purchasing an electric truck and trying it out, but it would be coming to us here in the future. As stated in the issue paper, this vehicle will be used by all departments. It gives us a chance for each department to see where an electric vehicle would be useful to them or not useful to them, what applications we could readily employ one. And so I think it's a good start to find out, you know, what we are looking at in the future so that we can be prepared for that. We wouldn't want to go all-electric and find out that that leaves us unable to service the residents of our city. We wouldn't want to drag our feet into this where maybe we can't maintain and service our gasoline-powered vehicles or diesel if we have any. So I think this is a good getting ahead of the curve and figuring out how we can best make a, at least a partial transition that I think we all see on the horizon.
Hearing no further comments, then we'll go to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fiki Samanu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northall?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. We have two items on there, Resolutions 21-77, 21-78. Twenty, 21-77 is a little different. It's two temporary turnaround easements. And we do have a requirement as we build our city, sometimes we end up with stub streets that are going to go forward into future development or that sometimes change, but in all cases where a stub street is longer than one house, we need a place for turnaround. And no, that's not for just them, but it has to be big enough to turn around a garbage truck, fire truck, so forth. So there's reasons to do this, but when it's completed, that may not be the end result. We may expand that into a regular street, but these temporary turnaround easements are needed at this point, and so that's 77. 78 is another, one of the traditional items that we do for a right-of-way purchase agreement, warranty deed, temporary construction easements at 4106 South, 2735 West. Anyway, those are the two items to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of the two items on the consent agenda.
Properly before us, hearing no further comment, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Northall?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fiki Samanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have on our agenda, an item carried over from last week. This is Application GPZ-6 2021, and in conjunction with that, or let's see, this is for property at 3525 South, 6800 West, and is a 9.9-acre parcel, and is proposed to be developed into senior housing. In conjunction with that proposal, we need to change, we would if we approve it, change our general plan with Ordinance 21-23, amend the zoning with Ordinance 21-24, and consider a Resolution 21-66 for a development agreement. The last meeting, this was voted on, it tied, and so no further action was taken on it. And so, as has been our tradition, and since no other motion would pass, it was brought forward to this week where we are going to discuss it more. Now, since this is a public input item, I guess since we did move it forward, we need to open that up for public input again or not? We don't have to open it?
Close it.
Close it last week, sir. Okay. Okay. Just want to make sure because we don't have too many of these, and I don't keep track of them, but there are more people around me that have better memories than I do. That's just about everybody around me. Okay. With that then, I'm just going to open it to the council. You're welcome to repeat items from last week, that's okay. Have any discussion you want. Any motion is open.
Mayor, if I could, I would just like to acknowledge that during the week, I received phone calls and emails from quite a few people who did not like my perspective and my point of view on this matter, and I'm okay with that. But I wanted to, and I wanted them to know that they've been heard, they haven't been ignored, just haven't changed my mind, but I also wanted to point out some of these comments do get a little bit under my skin in that the suggestion is made that if I don't change my vote, they won't vote for me, and I don't think that that's a really good position to take. I don't think any of us, if we really think about it, want to elect people who will vote against their conscience, against what they believe is best for the city, just in pursuit of personal popularity.
I would echo that. I also received a few calls and emails, but perhaps... Um, but perhaps unlike, uh, your situation, Steve, some of them, uh, three in particular, were actually in favor of the perspective that I took, which was in agreement with yours as well. So my, my mind has not changed on the matter. But I also appreciate and acknowledge all input and all feedback from folks and also assure, uh, individuals that their voice, uh, is also heard and taken into serious consideration when all of us make these, uh, decisions. And we don't always agree on everything that we do. It's not always unanimous. And that's, uh, just part of, uh, the dynamic of, of the city and the city council. And, um, I'm comfortable with, uh, my perspective on this as well.
So I would like to add my comments. Um, I appreciated the fact that the developer added two stipulations to the development agreement. And I think this is a good project to buffer between thirty-five hundred South and the RE zone, um, of Newton Farm and possibly more of the RE to the south of this project. So at this time, I would like to move for approval of Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three.
Second for that.
Are, are we discussing now that it's on the table?
Pardon that?
Are we discussing now that it's on the table?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, until the vote is taken, any council member can make comments or ask questions.
Is, uh, Caroline, did you make a motion?
Yes. Yeah.
Second for that.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I also, along with everybody, I think, received phone calls and emails. I actually went out and looked at the property. I was remembering it from my time when I worked at Orchard Elementary. And I was remembering it a little bit differently than what I actually saw when I drove around the property. And so, uh, you know, I'm feeling good about the vote tonight, and hopefully, uh, we'll be able to, to make the correct vote for the city. And I, I think that's what we all have to keep in mind is the, the best thing, the best outcome for the, the city itself, not just for one par, one parcel.
You know, it's interesting, and this is a, an excellent example of, uh, you know, the functions of a city. You know, elected officials do have to be careful, uh, on the basis of a few phone calls to be able to discern if that represents a majority of the city. And remember, this is a big city. You know, a hundred and forty thousand people. Uh, or if that represents a minority. But we are tasked with doing what we think is best, what we truly believe is best for the city. And it very well may be that among council members, there's a difference of opinion on that. I think that it is clear that our city could use more senior housing. And it is also very clear that we need more residential estates, such as we find in Newton Farms. And, uh, sometimes that choice is a little difficult to make. But to those who did express their opinions, uh, it does help. The phone calls that I got, uh, enabled me to understand the issue a little better. Uh, so it's, uh, you know, whichever way this works out, why our city will move forward. Always fun time. Any other, or any further comments?
My one comment is, one more, but, um, this one is a smaller piece, and I think it lends better to this development. The project we voted or approved two or three weeks ago that was a larger piece of land, I think, lent itself better to RE with its location and size. So I think for the betterment of the city, this is the, a good decision to move forward with this project.
Any further comments? Hearing no further comments, we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Fikis Manu?
No.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
No.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northout?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Now that that has happened, I would like to make some comments just upon future parcels. There are some that we probably lend themselves more to senior housing, as Councilwoman Lang mentioned. But I think that many of those available parcels can and should be residential estates. Uh, so we will be examining those, uh, to figure out how things best would work for our city since they are spread over various locations. I think that we need to, uh, work together to examine those. Uh, I do not believe that everything left should go senior housing, nor do I believe everything should go residential estates. I think there's room for both. I would also make a comment to our staff, uh, because there are not a lot of those parcels left. I know, looking at our city map, uh, the southwest part of our city has perhaps some small areas that might be considered for residential purposes that we might want to examine and even drive some changes maybe on our general plan and our zoning. That is merely just a comment. I don't know if anyone else is interested in that. Probably should have brought that up in our, uh, future agenda items, but I mentioned it here just in passing. Uh, we're getting built out and just not sure what all is going to happen in the future. My concern is, when you build out a city, you don't keep growing out, and there's not a lot of opportunity yet to grow out beyond what we are. Then you start to grow higher. And that brings with it some interesting challenges. So we may have to start thinking about that in the near future. Now, any of you are welcome to add any comments or any disagreements with that. That's great.
Yes, I, I, I have one, Mayor. I, my basic philosophy is, um, the demand is high right now in our city regarding the senior housing. And this piece of property is very nice for us to fit right in to that problem. I, I also thinking about the same thing like Stipula and Jake, uh, BTC Manu. Um, we want to have some, you know, uh, young generation and people they establish. They can come here and join with us and stay here in our city. But at the same time is, we need to solve our current, uh, basically is that the man is high, and we need to solve the problem. And we cannot wait for that long, basically, just us come for sure. And if they want to come here, they want to stay here, they live here with us, and they can figure out a way to do that. And we don't have to set aside for a piece of property or nice piece of property to them to build their business, I mean, their homes in our city. They are no special person. It's everybody are the same. Uh-huh. We treat them equally, and that's what I want to call them, my basic philosophy. Everyone are the same.
You know, thank you, Councilman Hune. And that reminds me, uh, and I've had some recent discussions with Salt Lake County and others. Uh, market forces can't be the sole driver of what you do in a city. We need balanced cities. We have cities in this valley that have almost no affordable housing. Now, that's a comparative term, okay? Uh, they have no small homes or small lots. We, on the other hand, have a lot of small homes and small lots. But for a city to be truly healthy individually, on its own, you have to have a balance. Now, I can't tell you what the right balance is. You know, how many small homes, how many residential estates, how many senior housing, how many apartments, how many trailer parks, you know, there's all these different things, townhomes, uh, accessory dwelling units. The legislature thought they solved the problem when they permitted those across most of the city. But again, there's a right balance to those types of units. And I think that's one of the things the legislature missed, was maintaining a proper balance. So, uh, and that's the enviable role of the city or unenviable, depending on your viewpoint, is to make those decisions. And we appreciate the great discussion we've had with this. Uh, there's no need for a closed session. So any other final comment before we end?
Move to approve Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Second?
Uh, thank you. I just want to go home now, so, okay. Oh, I can see the light at the end of the tunnel, council. I can see it from here. Okay, and did we have a second on that?
Yes.
I did, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Northout?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
No.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fikis Manu?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay.
And then I would move for approval of Resolution twenty-one dash sixty-six.
Second for that.
Ordinance twenty-one? Or is it resolution?
Oh, it says resolution.
Okay, sorry, I'm on the wrong line.
That's okay.
Yeah, Resolution twenty-one dash sixty-six. It's properly before us. Hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Fikis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northout?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now what I said before. Oh, and by the way, there is a redevelopment agency meeting, a, a brief one immediately following this. With that?
Most adjourned.
Without objection, the regular city council meeting is adjourned. Hearing no objections, then it's unanimous. Thank you.
I would call to order the special meeting of the RDA. Um, and we will begin our meeting with the electronic meeting statement.
Pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined that this meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location given the ongoing novel coronavirus pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the press and public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube at
Thank you. I would note, we've already had an opening ceremony, and everyone is one-hundred percent attendance. Um, we'll now move on to the minutes. Can I get a motion or discussion on the minutes of May fourth, twenty-twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, without any, um, nay votes, we will move for the motion to pass. Uh, we have, start with Resolution twenty-one dash zero-three. Ms. Cottle, can you explain that for us?
Sure, thank you. Um, this resolution is an agreement. It authorizes the approval of agreement between the RDA and Garf, um, WBDF LLC with regards to our business stabilization grants that we, um, have brought to the council. The idea behind this, of course, is to infuse and inject into our, um, businesses, especially the businesses that we like to, um, really bolster and see continue and grow and, and anchor here, um, some assistance to, uh, uh, work with their site. Many of these sites have, um, some significant development, um, hurdles to clear. In particular, this one, um, has been there a lo, quite a long time and, uh, had some need for some expansion. Um, as you're aware, these are matching grants, and in both cases that we talk about tonight, the matching, matching is significant, significantly exceeds the funding that this, the RDA is putting forth to the agreement. So I can, with that, I can answer any questions that the board might have.
Is there any comments, questions, or a motion on the?
Move for approval of Resolution twenty-one dash zero-three.
Thank you. Can we turn to Ms. Kamic for a roll call vote?
Mr. Fikis Manu?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Northout?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Um, the second one is similar. Ms. Cottle, could you explain that one as well?
Lots of Nikols around here. Um, yes, so very similar, you're right, chairwoman. And, uh, this one is with an entity called KMPC or M and M Motorsports, basically. Um, it is, uh, represents a significant expansion in our city. As we've brought to the, um, agency and to the council prior, um, many of these businesses, um, have had, have seen some significant growth in the past. And this one in particular represents a, a, a gathering up of various other dealerships around the valley to locate at this central location. And as I mentioned in a prior, uh, application, this is one of those that, uh, has been on-site for quite a while. And the site was, um, held to a particular size based on some of the constraints that it had, um, including a, a ditch, or for lack of a better word, a waterway, uh, that, that limited growth on one side. And so part of this is to assist with that. But again, very significant match in this case, very significant new investment into the property. And, um, as a staff, we recommend this, uh, approval for that purpose. We really, this business, we really would like to see stay and thrive and be able to expand to the, to the maximum amount they're able.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments, or a motion on Resolution twenty-one dash zero-four?
Move to approve Resolution twenty-one dash zero-four.
Thank you, and we'll turn it over to Ms. Kamic for a roll call vote.
Mr. Northout?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Fikis Manu?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, that is the end of our business. May I get a motion to adjourn? May I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. With no objection, we will adjourn. Thank you.